Good morning. We'll call this meeting of the Sierra County Commission on Tuesday, May 18th to order. Commissioner, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Mr. Hopkins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
I want to welcome everybody to this meeting. It's a busy meeting. Our gallery's about full. Maybe one or two more will come in. We have several guests with us. Lieutenant Baker, you're here for the sheriff.
I guess so, yes, sir.
Okay. And Sergeant Dominguez with the State Police. He's the little guy in the back there. I see Denise Barrera from Sierra Electric. Denise? John Bedal and crew are here from Sacred Winds and Ethos. They're gonna have a presentation in a little bit. Brandon Hall with Yvette Harrell's office.
Good morning.
Good to see you, Brandon. Let's see, is Ryan Williams in the room?
Yes, sir.
Who is that? Ryan Williams is our new Emergency Management Administrator. Ryan, welcome to your first meeting. You started yesterday and we're gonna start you out running, aren't we?
I'm ready.
That's good. Max, are you with Arrow Environment?
Good morning. New Mexico EDD.
EDD, okay. Thank you. Are there any other guests that I missed?
Neil Brown.
Neil Brown, yep. Yeah, I saw you come in. Good to see you, Neil. You're gonna present later, too. Okay. We want to congratulate a couple of our high school standout teams. Our Hot Springs Tigers have won their second state championship out of three years. Derek Bean and a whole bunch of coaches and what a, what a great time that is that, that repeats. And we'll look for a legacy to continue there. That's just outstanding. But we've also got the Scat Cats. Anybody know what the Scat Cats are? They have a competition that stems from STEM, science, technology, energy, engineering and math. And Envirothon is a state competition. And the Scat Cats have won it nine out of 10 years. And Mr. Hedge started that. He has since retired, but that legacy continues on. So we congratulate both state champs in a great way. And we're, we're glad to have them representing truth or consequences, Hot Springs High School and Sierra County.
Mr. Sheriff, I may.
Go ahead.
We also had another state champion, championship team in our FFA pasture and range team. They brought home the state championship for FFA. And Dawson Groulet actually was top in the state in pasture and range contests. So I want to congratulate them as well.
Thank you for that, Vice Chair Day. That's a, the future is bright with kids like that. We, we also want to take just a moment to talk about Eloy Armijo. This is an emotional time. We have 107 employees in Sierra County. Eloy started with the county in 1998 and he served 23 years. Eloy contracted COVID and went into the hospital here and he died on April 24th. The logo up there, Eloy designed. In his 23 years, he worked diligently to help get New Mexico retiree health care for all employees. He got a bachelor's degree from NMSU. And he also had about two inches thick of New Mexico Edge, which is our continuing education format through the state, New Mexico Counties and New Mexico State University. I think he, he had so many certifications, we'd spend an hour going through them. But he was a certified GIS specialist and he started the 9/11 addressing in Sierra County. He formatted and compiled PSAP, which is the Public Safety Access Points that's available to all emergency management services. So that we can get help to the people that need it. Eloy was a native. He grew up and he was very knowledgeable of landmarks and history and who lived where and, and everything about him. He was a proud member of the Army National Guard. He was an accomplished guitarist and loved music. He played with Tootie and his band innumerable times over the years and always enjoyed a jam session. Eloy was a friend to all. And he'll be missed. But we can smile knowing his accomplishments in 23 years and beyond that, in a lifetime of service to Sierra County. We pray peace and comfort to his widow Elaine and their family and all his friends. And this hit our employees pretty hard in Sierra County. Forgive my emotion, but boy, you never saw Eloy without a smile and a handshake and a, and a reminder that today was a good day. So we'll keep that in our hearts. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. A row call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you've had a chance to review the amendments, is there a motion or corrections?
Move to approve the minutes from the April 20th meeting.
I second.
Moved and seconded. A row call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes. Do we have any public comment that's not on the agenda? Brandon, I don't have you on the agenda. Did you wish to address us at all?
Um, no, sir. That's okay.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you being here and our best to Yvette Harrell as she continues to fight the good fight for the citizens of New Mexico and also for us here in Sierra County.
Thank you.
Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve consent agenda items A through F as presented.
I second.
Moved and seconded. A row call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Motion passes. Presentations and reports. We'll start with interim county manager Serena Bar Two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will begin obvious, or begin with the recognition of employees. This year, or this month, we have a handful of employees. The first one being Richard Shutter with the road department. He has 13 years with the county. Billy, would you like to say something?
Uh, yeah. Just appreciate all of Richard's artwork there. We gotta have a picture.
In the middle, in the middle.
Jack, tell us where we need to go.
Let him direct you.
All right. Thank you for all you do.
Hopefully.
Congratulations. The next employee we have is Michael Hearn. He has 12 years with facility management.
Bernie wants to say something about you, too.
Ha. Better get to the mic for that. No, just kidding. I'd just like to say Mike's a great employee. He's dedicated to his job. He's here every single day. When I gotta go somewhere, he fills in and it's like I was never gone. Fortunately, all my guys are like that. So it's nice to have them around. Thank you.
The next employee we'd like to recognize is Vanessa Segura with DWI. She has three years.
I'd like to say that Vanessa can't be here because she is doing her duty testifying in court this morning. And I can tell you, although the certificate says three years, she's been with the program for several years before that, before she was an official county employee. She works hard. She keeps me out of trouble and I appreciate it.
And that's a big job.
And it's a big job.
Okay, the next employee from the Treasurers Office, Christina Braz. She has four years with the Treasury.
Yes, I can say that Christina is a phenomenal employee. She does our accounting for us and she works with everybody well. She keeps us on our toes and we have a great time in our office. Thank you, Christina.
The next employee is Janet Godfrey, four years with the Treasurers Office. So you have two.
Janet is not here today. Her husband's not doing well, so. Her husband's not doing well, so prayers for him and, but anyways, she is a phenomenal employee as well. She's a one of our, she's our clerk to and takes care of all of our finance companies. So.
Mr. Chairman, last, last month, we recognized Ernie Armijo for 15 years. We like to give a healthier award for those that have served a little more time and make a, the five year, 10 years. So for 15 years, Ernie, thank you so much.
You know, Ernie is Mr. Fix It.
He is.
It doesn't matter what it is. If it's broke, he can make it work. And I don't know whether it's bubble gum and baling wire or magic.
Magic.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ernie. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please go ahead, Serena.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'd like to report today, the Department of Treasury finally sent out a portal to register for the recovery funds, COVID funding. Becky and I and Christie all spent a couple of days because it was a very intense registration. Two forms of ID, facial recognition, almost my firstborn child, but we got through it together. So with that, you know, it pending, they will give us updates and we'll just wait and see. They'll give us a, kind of, a summary of what they think they will give to us as far as funding goes. Once we get that in, of course, I'll let you know as soon as possible, but Becky's on top of it. She's checking her emails daily and hopefully we'll know soon enough as to what kind of funds we're gonna get and, and win. We also went through the budgeting process last week, so I want to thank you all for bearing with us and getting through that process. It was a very lengthy process. Also would like to thank all the departments for participating and doing their best to kind of be frugal on their budgets this year. With our new building and, and other things happening, it's, it's best to just stay frugal and, and keep kind of, you know, some savings in the 401. I've also been working on the transportation fund for the Bridge of Grace. 327,000 potentially coming from the New Mexico Department of Transportation. That also kind of a lengthy process. I hope to finish it up and get it submitted this week though. Friday is my goal. The deadline is the 15th of June, but I'd like to get it in sooner than later. And Virginia Lee actually is in my place going to the manager slash detention affiliate meeting in Donianna today. So she, she called just to kind of give us a count number. Our total count as of yesterday was 60. We have five in the Department of Corrections, one in Socorro County, the rest being in Luna County. So she's kind of, the Department of Corrections is our behavioral mental health issues. She's working on a few grants coming up for this fiscal year. Hopefully that'll help us with those counts. But she wanted to let you know that, you know, the grants are getting written. She's trying her hardest and so we can kind of expect, expect that number of detainees for probably the good summer. I mean, that's kind of the typically when we see the counts go up for detention is when it's warmer and everyone's outside and doing things and especially with some of the restrictions being lifted, we're gonna kind of see the activity go up. And for that, I'll, I'll stand for any questions.
Well, being the interim, we sure appreciate the work that you've done and getting us through after Mr. Swingle left and went to the city and, and we, we continue to, to see some, some strengthening of relationships there and I know you've been a part of that as well. So just thank you for your efforts.
It's been my pleasure, sir. Thank you.
We've got some other department heads. Candy, do you want to give us a treasures report?
So we survived our final tax collection of the year for 2020 and as of Monday, May 17th, yesterday, we had collect, we've collected 96% of the Sierra County property taxes for 2020. The second half of the collection went very smoothly. No late nights this year, first year since I've been there, so that was great. The girls did wonderful. Delinquent postcards will be mailed out before the end of next week and taxes were delinquent as of May 11th and penalty and interest have been added. So if you haven't paid your taxes, come see me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Candy. Any questions, commissioners?
She ran off, so.
That's okay.
I'll see you around for questions.
We, we noticed that.
Yeah, I can read that question.
Amy, do you have anything for the clerk's office that you'd like to share with us?
Not at this time, no. Everything's going smooth.
So you get this?
Yes. Magical Ernie and his guys fixed the ceiling.
Bubble gum and baling wire.
Yeah. I think that's what it was to begin with.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Madam County Manager.
And you do misdemeanor compliance?
I am the director of the Sierra County misdemeanor compliance program. Currently, in our pretrial compliance program, the numbers are increasing and it's interesting that your head count in the jail is 60, while approximately 210 people are not in jail because of the pretrial compliance program. We're able to provide services. Doesn't mean that they don't go back to jail. A lot of them do. They're in, they're out. However, it is providing that service that does help to keep the head count down in the jail. DWI currently on probation, we have 54. The numbers have not reflected yet, however, DWI arrests are up and that is a great deal attribute. It's a shame that it happens, but it's a tribute to the sheriff's office, the state police and the city police who are out there and they are proactively seeking out DWIs and taking them off the street. They're doing their job. So I expect as those cases, all of the cases that happened during all of the closure during the pandemic are now working their way through the system and I expect the DWI probation cases to rise significantly. Officer Lucero has 39 people on misdemeanor probation. Probably the majority of those are for domestic battery. We have two people in pre-prosecution misdemeanor diversion and currently our behavioral health court has one, kind of as our guinea pig, and we're hoping that that number increases based on how successful we are with this first one. The FY22 grant process for the DWI program is complete and the funding I requested, we now have a behavioral health court. I now have funding through our FY22 grant process to fund $15,000 for DWI treatment, which we want to contract and bring back in-house so that we have a better handle on, on the treatment process. And also in the grant, and this is good news, especially for these guys in law enforcement that are out there doing what they need to do, which is get drunk drivers off the road. State police is gonna get $5,000 for DWI related equipment. The sheriff's office is gonna get $5,000 for DWI related equipment and the police department as part of FY21 has $3,341 coming for DWI related equipment. So we're successful. Don't know what's gonna happen with National Night Out for 2021. Hopefully it's gonna be wide open and we can just do it like we've done it for the last five years. And with that, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'll stand for questions and hang up on that phone call.
Questions?
I've got a question. Will you guys be working with the high school seniors again this year?
As long as the respect program goes forward, absolutely. We've been asked to come and do presentations for the driver education classes and we look forward to doing that. And then we will provide prevention funds for the school district's red ribbon week campaign. The communications with the school district throughout the pandemic has kind of not been that good, but I will rebuild that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Just a comment, Marty. I just appreciate the misdemeanor compliance office and their outreach efforts during all the high school basketball games, football games that have been broadcasted, that ad that you did just continues to replay. I'm gonna get involved in the schools, I think. I'm very excited to see that get started again. So just appreciate all your efforts and, and your outreach.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mickey, you're back in the back hiding. You got anything to share with us? From Sierra County Regional Dispatch?
Mr. Chair, commissioners, manager bar two. Tomorrow, SCRTA has a board meeting, SCRTA Board Meeting at 10 o'clock at the 100 North Date Center. SCRTA's fully staffed. I have two dispatchers leaving this Sunday to go to Law Enforcement Academy for three weeks. So they'll do their law enforcement, certified dispatchers come back and they've, I've had them for over two months now. They're almost, pretty much ready to go. I guess everybody saw the tower is up at the new building. It's big.
It's big.
It's big. But it's gonna be such a huge improvement to communications for our county, especially where, where it's placed. I think we're gonna have a lot better with the Winston Poverty Creek area. She's higher than we're, than the original on Tank Hill because of the incline and where she's at. She's 85% complete now. They've already started putting the antennas up. The, I guess COVID, I couldn't, a lot of things have been delayed. The radio shelter, which is 10 by 20, the concrete's already been laid for it, but it will not be here until maybe mid-June. Kind of puts a delay in hooking up the radios and all of that for that point, but advanced communications will get it done. And the generator, we're kind of still on limbo. We're not, it was supposed to be here in April, but it's not here yet. So there's been a lot of delay on the big, the big stuff. But I do know that our production, the, our councils, the, our consoles that the state pays for, which was a grant that I got for 70,000, they went into production this week. Estimated delivery date is gonna be August 17th. I did speak with the general contractor over there and he thinks that's a good date for the carpet and for the consoles to be installed. And then the rest of our, my contractors will come in and start putting her together. So.
I hear a vicious rumor that a former dispatcher's been getting some console time.
Yeah, but people are tired and I know a lot of people like overtime, but they also need a life. So I have been covering some shifts and kind of a little rusty at it. I thought maybe, it's not like riding a bicycle. You get right back into it. My dispatchers are, are running circles around me, but yeah, I'm trying to give, get my dispatcher to get some vacation time. We got Memorial Day, our Memorial Weekend coming up. We anticipate a really big weekend because we didn't get to do it last year and the campers are already starting to go out there, including mine. And I am gonna double or triple up on my dispatchers over the weekend to make sure we have adequate coverage, radios and all of that, but I do expect a, a big weekend. And if I have to, you'll be hearing my voice on the radio as well.
I think that's great. You know, it's, it's always good to share part of that load with your, your workers and they appreciate you being at a console and taking up the slack. So good job.
It's, I appreciate working with them. I like to work, especially my grave, I've been covering some graveyards. That's in my age, I notice if you haven't done it in a while, it'll kind of be a little harder, but you know, they're, my crew is incredible. I mean, they're lifesavers, what they do and being able to see both shifts do what they do and be part of that, it's just, it's been an honor to work with them, but yeah, they kind of giggle a little bit. But that's all I have for now.
Questions, commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Josh, do you have anything from the sheriff's department? Lieutenant Baker?
Yeah, I can give a brief rundown. I'm short, I'm short people here. So we've got a lot going on. Deputy Folkerson just graduated the academy last week, so we got him back. He's gotta wrap up a couple of months of field training. We'll have him out on the road. Deputy Avalos, who was certified, he's just wrapping up his field training. He's fixing to take on a shift of his own. Sheriff Hamilton's currently at the Western Sheriff's Association Conference where he was nominated for New Mexico's representative for sheriff of the year. So we'll see if he gets to bring that title back to New Mexico.
Good.
That's why he's not here today. We're wrapping up, let's see, FY19 Stone Garden Grant, fixing to go into FY20. We wrapped that a year ahead of time, so we're a year behind on that. So we got another $140,000. We're about to kick in there. We've ordered the radios on the state homeland security grant, so we got 30,000 last year on that. We've got those radios coming in, but like Mickey said, thanks to COVID, I don't know when we're gonna get those, hopefully sooner rather than later. Thanks to Senator Diamond, we'll soon be ordering all new body armor for not just our department, but actually TRCPD, I think Masiya Marshals, I think just about every small agency in her district, she was able to secure legislative funding for. I think that's about it. We've got a lot going on at our office right now. It's that time of year, so.
Well, thank you for that and, and kudos to Senator Diamond for helping us out on that, so that's great.
Oh, absolutely.
Questions, commissioners?
None.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
You bet. Billy, how about the road department?
Mr. Chair, commissioners, manager bar two. We've had a blade down for a couple of months now. It was stolen and ran out of hydraulic fluid, so we finally got a insurance claim for it and had it shipped off this week to Cruz or El Paso, I believe, to go get checked out and make sure everything was pretty good on it. We did get a rental blade in. I rented a little bit yesterday. It's a pretty nice blade, so I have somebody running it this morning. We're trying to get caught up in the B District since we got so far behind and getting a lot of complaints, so trying to get caught up there because we're down an operator also, so.
Do you have any applicants, Billy?
I'm not real sure yet. Christie, as far as I know, we hadn't got any before Christie.
Who left, Billy?
What's that?
Who left?
Many?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I think we've had one applicant so far.
One? Okay. Thank you, Dora.
We continue to replace a few cattle guards, repair a few cattle guards. We're in pretty bad shape with all, most of all of our cattle guards, so we're trying to upgrade all of those. We finally got our SB funding from the state yesterday, so we're just waiting on cap for our road in purchase. So that'll be all new chip seal for about a mile and a half, so. And we ended up purchasing a new roller this month. It's not new, it's a used roller, but it's a pneumatic tire roller. We always usually borrow one from the city, so we ended up getting our own and so far it looks like it'll do the job.
Good.
I think that's about it.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, if I may. Billy, the projects that you got 100% of the funding on, would you just talk a little bit about that? Because typically we have to pay.
We do. We usually have an in kind of 75, 25, so we pay 25%. Usually an in kind for our trucks and time and fuel and this year that was waived, so the state did pay for 100% on this SB and our cap. So that was a pretty big help.
That's great. Perfect.
Get a little more road done.
Thank you.
And I think I just about secured a pit also that has some existing material on it, so that's gonna save us quite a bit of money. I gotta send, I got the emails this morning, so I gotta send those papers back again to the state land office for about the fifth time. Lots of paperwork to get that done, but I think I got it all done after I send these back, so I think the state commissioner has to sign off on it and then we'll, we'll be green clear on that and maybe start hauling some material out of there.
Good. Well, appreciate your efforts and road crew's doing good.
Thank you.
Share that with them.
Will do.
All right. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
Travis Atwell and floods?
No updates since my report last week.
We don't have any floods for sure, but boy, Louisiana and Texas is catching it. I talked to my son. They got over four inches in an hour down there in East Texas and Louisiana, they were, had all the P-rolls out picking people up and getting them out of the water, so wish they'd send some our way.
Me too.
Ernie, do you have anything from maintenance you want to share with us?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. We have just been busy with weeds. We went out to Monticello Friday, and we cut all the weeds around that fire department out there trying to help Matt out. Needed to be done. Got a pickup load we brought in. Everything else looked pretty good out there. We've been going around and checking all the fire departments. And weeds are done good. They're staying down. We had to go out to Hillsboro last week and get some windows replaced out there. Somebody had moved the chairs against the wall and didn't notice it went through a window. They kind of leaned back or something. Then we ended up changing the locks out there. They all got rekeyed because there's too many keys out there. I limited them to what keys they could have when I went back with the new keys. So we're good on that. We had to replace the AC unit up on detention, which Mrs. Lee's grant paid for that one due to it's where they're doing their rehabilitation and stuff upstairs. So it didn't cost us anything out of our budget. I do have another unit in the control room that needs to be replaced. It's a little split unit. I'm getting prices on that now so we can try and get it fixed for those guys. And other than that, stand for any questions?
Well, it's a small crew.
We've had all this weeds.
Yeah.
It's amazing. No moisture, and we got weeds.
Yeah.
Yep. But thank you for your efforts and an amazing crew.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Did I miss anybody? Serena?
Mr. Chairman, would you like for Ryan to come up?
Well, I sure would, Ryan. Second day on the job, come give us a report.
Chairman, Commissioners, Manager Bar Two, thank you for the opportunity. Looking forward to working with everyone in the county and then with our surrounding counties, too. Not a whole lot to update at this time, except that I'm just, you know, getting my feet wet, learning the processes, reaching out, notifying everyone in my network that a position will change. Reaching out to a lot of the fire departments, talking with the chiefs, just kind of making sure what their open projects are, any concerns, anything that they have going on. A lot of future projects that I have set up on my project tracker, we'll be getting the chiefs meetings going again. Now that the COVID's kind of lifting, we can all kind of get back together and get our strategic planning going.
Good.
Yeah, I just learning a lot, having a good time with everyone. It's a great group of people to work with. And only other small update that I have is if anyone was concerned with the Doge Fire, that's in, just north of Beaverhead in Catrone County. It's at 1,000 acres right now, 0% containment. They have about 30 personnel on there and a type 3 incident management team. It's looking really good because the Doge Fire is located in between, three sides of it were prescribed fire a while back, so that helps out. And there's some natural roads and geographical features, so it'll help with the containment. So it's looking really good at this point. Visibility and air quality are not affecting us at this time either.
Yeah, it is managed fire use. I don't know if that's the term anymore, but that's what it was. And the last fire in there was 2001, and I was on that, and it was a managed fire use in the Doge Canyon area.
Helps when you manage it properly, yes sir.
Yep. So we're doing some good with knocking down the hazardous fuels with periodic burns. And especially when nature starts with lightning, they can be managed. So that's a great thing. Well, Ryan, we're sure pleased that you're with us. We look forward to getting to know you and working with you. And welcome to the position. Welcome to Sierra County.
I appreciate it, everyone.
Commissioners, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, so we'll move on to Mr. Neil Brown with Rio Lago Marina. Neil, glad you could come be with us and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I've been working with a number of people. As everyone's aware, we have a horrendous forecast this year with the lake supposed to do. We're projected that we're going to be about 12-foot deep right in front of the dam, and that will be the end of our lake. This will be catastrophic for our community if this happens. We've been working quite a bit with trying to find people who will give us some water and enable us to have water so that we don't get to that point. We're looking at, if we do, we'll get to the fish kills where the lake will become a stinking mess. And this has happened before in the 1950s. And having talked to people and read reports of what it was like, nobody would come to the lake because it stunk so bad. Fish were dead all over the beaches. Flies were horrendous. We don't, we don't need that in our county, and there are ways to prevent it. We've been fighting, I've been with Rebecca Dow, we've been to numerous meetings. I've talked to the Bureau of Reclamation ad nauseam, and we can't seem to get anyone to help us. The projected Heron operation, it's in green here. I know it's not real, from this distance, you can't really tell. But right in here, that's June, June through August, that's the high point at Lake Heron. That is our low point at Elephant Butte where we are out of water. We have tried to get them to send that water down. They're going to send it down, but they don't want to send it down to December. We could use it earlier than that if we could get them to do that. That's one thing that we have tried to push. We can't get them to move. Cabayo, they want to store, store quite, close to 18,000 to 20,000 acre feet there. We would like to keep some of that into Elephant Butte. We've talked to El Paso irrigation districts. We've talked to the Rio Grande irrigation districts. They would all like to see BOR store that water in Elephant Butte as well. BOR has refused to do that. They're concerned about some Indian ruins being exposed. We've expressed they can put a fence around it. Lots of people will volunteer to put that fence up around it. That's not the reason they want to do it, but that's one of the things they're citing. They also cited that they're concerned about water flow, carrying trees or branches or debris and blocking their gates. I guarantee the gates there are much easier to clean than they are at Elephant Butte. So there's other things that are going on. We don't, we aren't privy to, we don't have the information. We have solutions. We can't get anyone to help us with the solutions. We presented them. We've been dealing with the state engineer for several years since his appointment to try and get him to hold credit waters and to make regulations to hold credit waters in Elephant Butte. New Mexico has been in a credit situation. None of those waters have been stored in Elephant Butte. They've been stored in other reservoirs. Elephant Butte will take the biggest hit of all the reservoirs in New Mexico this year. We will, we will lose the most amount of water. We will be kept at the lowest point. Abiquis is going to go low only because they have construction going on. And they're going to hold the water out in one of the other upstate, upstate reservoirs, and then they'll release it and fill it back up. What is going on is that we just don't have the, the voice with the politicians. We don't have the stroke in order to get them to take care of us, and that's, that's what's happening. And that's why we're going to go through this experience this year. On the other side of things, we have been coming in at just about double the forecasted elevation for better than 10 days now. We're forecast to be coming in anywhere from 6 to 1,000 cubic feet per second. We've been coming in at over 1,000 to 2,000 cubic feet per second. That looks really good. The forecasts are that we're going to have a heavy monsoon this year. I anticipate we are not going to go as low as they forecast. Both Elephant Butte and EBITID have hinted that they may leave water here. Much of the water that has been in Elephant Butte has been as a result of El Paso leaving water in the reservoir. Otherwise, we would have been much lower than we have been, but they have, they have maintained water here. Lawsuit's supposed to be heard the end of this year. I anticipate that Texas and Elephant Butte Irrigation District will win that lawsuit, and they will, that will result in more water being stored. It's a shame we have to go through this in this manner, but that, it seems like that's the way it has to be. New Mexico has violated the compact in numerous places, and it's going to come to light. We have several gauging stations that have been removed from the Middle Rio Grande. If they would put more gauging stations, it would be easier to monitor how much water's coming in and going out. As a result, right now, they're not using the San Marcio Gauging Station. They're using the discharge of Elephant Butte Lake as a gauging station, which has allowed them to say, well, this much water was lost to evaporation or soaking into the ground at the lake. And, and we need to take and tighten these things up, these regulations up, so that we know how much water is actually coming in and going out. I just stated that we have been coming in at more than double what they forecast. I checked this morning at the elevations, and they say it has not had any impact at the lake. With the lake as low as it is, it should have had a terrific impact, but they're not reporting it. We're in a difficult situation. If we can get the Pit Bulls, Rebecca, Senator Diamond up there to, to fight for us, we may be able to get some of this turned around. If the state engineer will start holding the credit waters in Elephant Butte, it will, it will save this area. Yes, I have a vested interest in Elephant Butte, but we all do. It is, it is the number one income for state parks on, on all of their parks, and it represents 25% of the state park budget. I would think state parks would be fighting this battle with us. They aren't, they're, they're invisible. I had the two people at one meeting, they had nothing to say but condolences. And, but they're not ready to fight with us. I present this to you just so that you are aware of what is happening, what's going on. If you have an opportunity to talk to Rebecca Dow, she is, we've been shoulder to shoulder on an awful lot of this fight. Are there any questions?
Commissioners?
No, I just agree with you. I mean, I look at how much water is in Cabayo Lake and compared to Elephant Butte. And I mean, it's storage for storage. So my, my, my solution to this would be store most of it up in Elephant Butte. When they're ready to release Cabayo, just let it run through. But I don't guess everybody thinks the way we do.
There, one reason I found out for doing that is, it's a little bit, well, it's political. It's saying that the, the Middle Rio Grande pays for evaporation out of Elephant Butte. El Paso pays for evaporation out of Cabayo. Well, Cabayo evaporates an awful lot more than Elephant Butte, at eight foot deep. And so that's a political move that I'm not sure who's pushing that.
Sure. And I guess another point of contingency is, I mean, last year, the revenue out of Elephant Butte was non-existent because of COVID. And I mean, this year, it's going to be open, but if it goes down to 12-foot at the dam, who's going to want to go? So I mean, that's two years of hit hard.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, or if you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
So I'm more of an acre-feet percentage guy. What is the latest projections as far as percentage in the lake?
I don't have the percentage exact, but it's less than 1%. It's like somewhere three-quarters to half a percent of Elephant Butte.
Is that even including the additional runoff that we're seeing come in?
No, that's the forecast.
Okay. So I just want to be clearing this. Neil, you know, I've had discussions on this. I want to put out there that this reservoir was built for irrigation. I think that's very clear. However, if there's no water in the lake, the dam is no good for the farmers down south. And so one thing I think if this commission's going to continue to push this issue and move forward is that we don't make this a recreation versus agricultural issue. Because I won't turn my back on my farmers in the southern part of the county. But I do think there are options. And I'm just very fearful that if we do turn into recreation versus agriculture, we have a lot of environmental groups that are working in the background to really minimize the amount of water in Elephant Butte because of evaporation issues. And so I just want to put that out there. But I definitely think there are some options. In my history in working with the minimum pool issue, there never seemed to be any concise amount of water that we wanted to see for a minimum pool. When I was involved, I heard numbers of 60,000, 200,000, 100,000, 400,000. And there was never any concise voice to go up to the state engineer to go to Bureau of Reclamation. And so again, I think if we're going to do this, and I know Commissioner Hopkins is now the member of the commission on that board, that if we're going to go after this and work with Bureau of Reclamation, I don't want to say go after Bureau of Reclamation, work with them, that we as a community come up with that firm number, come up with the plan, and move forward with it. Because I fully understand, you know, a federal elected official or Bureau of Reclamation really throwing their hands up whenever they're hearing a number of different voices and number of different numbers, and not a concise plan and minimum pool acre-feet number moving forward. So again, I just think that there's some work to be done. I know I was working with Earl Conway on some numbers, you know, talking about a 400,000 conservation pool and then a 60,000 acre minimum pool. And that effort just seemed to be stalled because of the kind of other numbers coming up behind us and, and, you know, not from within our group. And so there was a lot of confusion that was created because of that. And so I think that's something we need to look at. We need to be very cautious moving forward with it. But again, we have to have that concise voice coming from Sierra County and how we move forward.
I agree wholeheartedly, and this absolutely is not a recreation versus irrigation issue. We don't consume water, so we aren't looking at taking water. We just play on it. And if there's water there for the farmers down south, we're delighted. We're very appreciative of, especially El Paso, who has elected to leave water for us. So we wholeheartedly support the farmers down south. There is one scenario that is being looked at, which I hope does not happen, but that is if the fish kill gets to be an environmental hazard, they will stop the dam, which will hurt all of our farmers down south. And we don't want to see that happen. It's a water management problem. It's, it's not a, it's not a recreation versus farmers, and I want to make that clear to everybody. As far as the minimum pool, we have proposed 400,000 acre feet. There's a number of reasons for that. We have bounced that off of the Elephant Butte Irrigation District in El Paso. They seem to be in favor. They feel like that's a good number to have. The reason for that is that TRIPS regulation in the compact that allows people to store water upstream. It's also the amount of water we had that was released under the Richardson administration that caused, that was at the beginning of the lakes dropping. It was that 400,000 acre feet that was in the pool in the credit waters that we had.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may continue?
Go ahead.
No, and I want to be clear on this, Neil, that I wasn't going after you about turning it agriculture versus recreation. I want to be clear on that. I've just been involved in some conversations with some individuals who have asked, well, why do we even need to turn water down south to the farmers? I've had those conversations. So I want to make that very clear, that it's not coming from you, but there's just some conversations that I've had with individuals locally that have asked that question. But again, I think we're going to hear from Bureau of Reclamation, I believe, next. And so I'll be interested to see kind of their perspective of it, and maybe we can look at going forward from there.
And along those lines, I want to make that clear as well. And I'm glad you brought it up because we have had people, primarily political people, who have tried to pit this to divide us, and we're not going that direction. And I, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
And sorry, Mr. Chairman, this is the last time, I promise. No, and I bring up the environmental groups because Wild Earth Gardens actually reached out to the county, I believe, a year and a half ago or so, with their plan of how to minimize evaporation of water in New Mexico. And that was literally, one of their alternatives was to drain Cabayo completely and store 100,000 acre feet of water in Elephant Butte all the time, and then store water north. That's horrible for us. Because even though Elephant Butte is our number one cash cow for the state of New Mexico and for the county, a lot of people enjoy Elephant Butte, or Cabayo Lake, excuse me. And so I just, I don't like the idea of these environmental groups coming in the background of what the locals are trying to work on and say, we want to drain Cabayo completely and only keep 100,000 acre feet of water in Elephant Butte all the time. I think that's just very dangerous and something that we need to look out for. And then be very wary of that. That is an approach of another group that's not locally led.
Along those lines, I'm not sure if everyone's aware about the Dam Busters. It's, there are environmental groups that are There are environmental groups that are taking out dams. If Elephant Butte is not using their generating capabilities, it's another end for them to say, hey, you know, you aren't needing this dam very much anyway, let's just take it out. There have been hundreds of dams in the United States that have been torn out. These groups targeted some large dams the last couple of years. I believe the Lake Mead was one of them, and they ended up having to come to some consensus where they worked together. We don't even want to start down that road, so I agree, we need to be... Recognize this from a logical and a side... A point of reason.
Well, one of the reasons that Brandon Hall is here with Ubit Harold's office is to get a little bit more understanding on the Elephant Butte issue, and we appreciate him being here. I've been watching him take notes, so I think that we will elicit Congresswoman Harold's support, and we have discussed this at other times, and she's very much behind a conservation pool that eliminates the battle between recreation and irrigation. We want to conserve the lake and the species in it and keep the silt from traveling down to the dam, and so many issues that are pretty convoluted. But I think that Congresswoman Harold will assist us with legislator Dow and Senator Diamond.
And she has been very responsive to our phone conversations as well.
Mr. There is a natural resource committee tomorrow where they're going to discuss drought, and I'll be testifying for Representative Harold in that, and I'm sure, in fact, I know Elephant Butte Lake will be of discussion in that committee hearing.
Yep. Thank you for taking that on, Travis. Neil, thank you. Appreciate you coming before us. Are you ladies with the Bureau of Reclamation?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Please come on up and introduce yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jennifer Fowler. I'm the area manager for the Albuquerque area office of the Bureau of Reclamation. We're an area office. We cover the entire Rio Grande watershed down to Fort Quitman, Texas, is where my office covers. So we go on up into Colorado at the headwaters of Colorado, down through El Paso with our last irrigation district down there, and we hand it off to another reclamation office about 100 miles south of El Paso. So we don't have geopolitical boundaries. We have watershed boundaries, so the Rio Grande is in my purview. Also brought Mary Carlson with me today. She's our public affairs person. She's shared information and handouts and everything with you. I will be using my notes today. I'm terrible at speaking from notes, but she put them together, and it's interactive with some handouts that you have, and so I will awkwardly work my way through notes. If I could have captured everything we just heard, I would like to address any of those, so please re-ask those questions if I don't hit on any of those. This is a very important issue to the state, extremely important issue to you folks locally. So I know that you're being bombarded with information. I would just caution you that not all the information you're hearing is based in fact. And so we are taking every opportunity we can to share the facts with folks. Water in New Mexico is pretty complicated, and we don't expect everybody to understand how the water works, why it is where it is, but we will come share that information at any time, hopefully in a way that it's understandable, because there's a lot of information flying around, you know, why is... Why do we have so much water up in Heron? That water is all contracted out. Reclamation has contracts with folks. It's there because the contractors want it there. If the contractors want us to move it, we'll move it. There really isn't any reason for a contractor to want their Heron water to come down to Elephant Butte. So, you know, just some of those kind of dead-end conversations, we can fill you in there. But at the end of the day, our message is hopeful. We think a recreation pool and minimum pool, a conservation pool, is doable, and we're happy to help in any way that we can. And I'll share more details with you there on that. But yeah, we're on board with that. We don't have the authority to do it, otherwise it would have been done by now. But we do think that's the solution here. So again, let me hit some points, share some of the handouts with you, try to just hit some of the facts, and then we can talk about whatever you all would like to talk about and address some of Neil's points. So we... This kind of started, we do an annual operating plan. We look at the forecast for the weather. NRCS tells us how much snowwater equivalents up there. We can find a year that's similar to that in the past, so we'll find a year with similar hydrology, plug that into our model, and we talked to our districts, the two irrigation districts we talked about, Elephant Butte, one of them's in New Mexico, the other one's down in Texas. And I can assure you, Elephant Butte Dam is not going anywhere. The United States was in a bad situation trying to make deliveries to Mexico, and Elephant Butte solved the problem, and it continues to solve that problem today. So it's not a dam that would be up for discussion on getting rid of, because it solved an international dispute between two countries, and it very successfully continues to do that. So we work with the International Boundary Water Commission on deliveries to Mexico in our two districts. We put that on top of our projections of the hydrology, which we're pretty good at, and we figure out what's going to happen throughout the year. And so that's what's generated this conversation. When we plugged all that in, like we always do, it showed a reservoir level that we haven't seen since 1954. And so the cause for alarm is real. It was us doing our normal job that we do, looking out ahead. We're always looking out ahead. We couldn't be more hopeful for a monsoon season this year. I'm looking at clouds in the sky this week, thinking, is this the monsoon that's going to start early this year? Because that's truly the answer. The rec pool will help. But getting back to some sort of normal hydrology would also help as well. We are entering the third decade of drought. You're hearing drought. The Colorado River, if anybody follows the news there, is crashing as well. They're hitting reservoir levels that are triggering disputes between states. They're having to implement and develop agreements. We're working frantically to develop an agreement between all the states that affect Lake Powell, because we weren't projecting for it to happen for two more years, but because of how dry everything is, I mean, it really doesn't matter if you get normal snowfall anymore, because that snow is not melting and finding its way to our reservoirs. And you start hearing more and more about, we may be in an aridification period. We're just getting more arid. I'm not going to talk about climate change or anything like that, but we are seeing normal amounts of snowfall, not result in that amount of water that making it to our reservoirs like we've historically seen. And so we are now expecting Powell to cross that threshold this year instead of two years down the line, and that turned around in a one- or two-month period. So it's pretty shocking. You know, we like to project accurate information, but we're pretty conservative of that, because we know farmers are basing their year and their crops on what we're saying, and we're not even being conservative enough in our projections. The water is just... It's just not there. So in our annual operating plan, we said the reservoir could get pretty low. Hopefully, the monsoons, as Neil's very hopeful, will keep it from getting those low levels, but we have to let people know so they can properly plan. We are, for the first time, establishing our own minimum pools for the protection of our infrastructure and the safety of our workers. I can show you, in fact, I'll just do it right now, some pictures of Cabal. This was 2016. We dropped Cabal down to 6,000 acre-feet, and this is the intake structure covered with debris, the plug of sediment that went through the dam. And this, granted, was after a fire up in the hills. That fire has not completely revegetated itself. It was after a fire, and we were getting good flows, and monsoon flows down the Arroyos. It delivered a lot of vegetation to Cabal. We went down to the 6,000 feet, and it caused us to have workers in unsafe condition trying to keep irrigation flows to the districts, along with the price tag that was in the tens of thousands of dollars to fix the intake, along with the damage that was caused that we can't even see, because it happened to gates and valves inside the outlet works and stuff.
What year was that again?
2016. So we do not intend to go down to 6,000 again. The archaeological site Neil referred to, so 6,000, we're not doing this again. We are protected to operate this facility in a safe manner, and this was not safe. The problem is, between 6,000 and 12,000, we expose an archaeological site. And we, in consultations with SHIPO and just our own common sense, if the lake level, Cabal has a lot of wave action. If the lake is at that level, the wave action is damaging an archaeological site, an old pueblo that's there. And so we can't have the reservoir at that level because of the wave action that's causing damage. We're in violation of the National Historic Preservation Act if we have the lake at that level. So 12,000 is as low as we can bring Cabal unless we drop it all the way down that pueblo, and then this is the situation we get into there, where we have to drop the lake. So we were talking to SHIPO about potentially consulting. I can let folks know there's several Native American tribes that have an interest in this, and I'm guessing if we ask them what they want us to do in a formal G-to-G, government-to-government consultation, I'm pretty sure they're going to say, keep it underwater. So we have our hands tied a bit, trying to be a helpful agency to address concerns with that one. And so the minimum pools for both, the good news is that same logic we're applying at Cabal, we're applying at Elephant Butte. We're not going to drop it down to kill the fish so that there's a public nuisance hazard. We're saying, because we don't want dead fish coming through our outlet works at Elephant Butte, so we're applying the same logic. We have a minimum pool at both. We will not drop Elephant Butte below 10,000 acre-feet. We haven't had it below about 30,000 in a long time, so we will be watching very closely when we get down to 30, to make sure we're not doing anything that could potentially damage our facilities, because we'll have to look to shut down those releases if we are. So the districts are on notice. I can assure you, if it comes down to us trying to stop short of the 10,000 that they've been promised, it will get ugly around here if we try to take that water from farmers. We'll have to be able to make a good case that it's impacting infrastructure, but we will be watching that very closely. So I think I'm on talking point number three now. Am I on a roll? Yep, so we're in drought. Here's the handout, just for some graphics for you. One of the things that really jumped out at me, it shows when you had good years and when the reservoir was full. If you correlate, you know, good times down here and reservoirs full and spilling, you'll see that the green lines are above the average. But what you can't help but notice since the late 90s, early 2000s, only four times have we had above-average flow past Oduwe. Oduwe is the gauge up above Santa Fe that determines how much water New Mexico owes to Texas under a compact. So it only four times in the last 20 years for it to be above-average flow plus Oduwe really tells you you're in a drought cycle. So we are, we believe we're entering that third year, that third decade of drought. They do, for some reason, we tag 30-year drought periods. I think we can use tree rings to go back thousands of years and looking at what we think the hydrology was in 30...
So you think we're at the end of the drought?
We're hopeful that we're at the end of the drought and not the beginning of an aridification period where drought... I mean, I'm being cautioned about using the word drought, because drought implies it's going to end, and you're going to go back to a period like this, that's a wet period. And we're not so sure that that's really going to be the case, but we're trying to learn as much as we can about that. So that's the Oduwe gauge. We do have the teacup map. We've, in the past, we've had these teacups... Oh, you want me to... I can go there, actually. Well, let me hit this real quick. We had the same-sized teacup kind of for all the reservoirs, and realized it gives the wrong impression. Elephant Butte only being 12% full, there's more water in a 12% full Elephant Butte than there is in an 80% full, you know, Sumner, for example, because Elephant Butte is so huge, it stores 2 million acre-feet. That's a very large reservoir. The second, what's the second-largest reservoir, Mary, that in New Mexico is nowhere near 2 million acre-feet. It's probably not even 600,000 acre-feet. Abiqui up north only stores a couple thousand acre-feet. Avoto only stores a couple thousand acre-feet. The Pecos is just a very shrunken version of the Rio Grande. So that's kind of the hydrology, the forecast. Inflow versus outflow shows you where we... Oh, these are all inflows. Could you hit the next? Yeah, there we go. That's the reservoir elevation and volume. So that's, I explained at the beginning, we look at the hydrology, what water's up there, what did a similar year look like, and what are districts going to be calling for that water? So you'll see the storage elevation versus inflows there. So we do expect to end up, we'd get down as low as the 10,000 you're seeing potentially, and then ending up around 90,000 at the end of the year for planning, folks, for next year. But the monsoons can certainly have an impact on that. Our hydrology that we used this year did not assume monsoons. That was some, sort of the judgment we put on that. So this is not projecting much, if any, monsonal flow. Cabal's on there. I did have another answer in my mind about Cabal. Why don't we just release it out of Elephant Butte for farmers? And the answer is the power generation. When you have, operating for a power plant, you have the turbines, you want, you need to run the water through the turbines in order to generate power. Can the dam release more than what can go through the turbines? Yes. You'd be using the, what's it called, Mary, the overflow valve, the bypass valve. We can shoot water out bypass valves. Using bypass valves shortens their life. They're not designed to be used every year. They're designed to be used when it's flooding. So if you're looking at normal hydrology, maybe every 10 years you have a flood, you use your balancing valve every 10 years. To use it year in, year out, to generate water for farmers, we'd be having to replace it on a regular schedule, and replacing that shuts down all the irrigation works and everything. So power plants are not set up to... This power plant's not set up to be able to keep up with the demand of irrigation farmers because it didn't need to. That's what Cabal's for. You start generating power, you run the water through the turbines at a slower rate than the demand is going to be, you build up that water in Cabal, then when the districts turn on, we're able to meet their demand because we have staged the water at Cabal, basically. So when they come on at 10,000 CFS, 6,000, 5,000 CFS, we can't run that through Elephant Butte and generate power, but we can release that amount of water from Cabal. So that's the answer for why Cabal's being used the way it is, is because we are, we look at, you know, big picture. We take care of the environment, we take care of power, we generate hydropower, we take care of our farmers, we try to accommodate recreation as best we can, we try to bring balance to these issues. So that was the Cabal piece. Back to the rec pool. It was authorized in the 70s, and the 70s authorization came with the water. It was great. Hey, move that water down, create this rec pool. You have 10 years to do that. So in the 70s, there was a rec pool. That 10 years came and went, and it didn't get extended for some reason. None of us know why. They didn't say, hey, this is great, let's make it permanent. And so that authorization ended. Again, in the 80s, there was a desire for a rec pool once that had ended, and one of the Samonchama contractors, I believe, was saying, nope, you're not allowed to store Samonchama water in Elephant Butte, so you can't use it for a rec pool. So legislation was passed, saying, yes, you can store Samonchama water in Elephant Butte, and it can be used for a rec pool. So we are authorized, the reservoir is authorized to be used for a rec pool. The problem is, where does the water come from? Water's not cheap. We're not authorized to provide the water. If there was new legislation that told us we were authorized to do it, and if came with funding, we could help in that way, potentially some kind of a cost share with the state, to federal-state cost share to provide that water. This is a difficult time to be in the market for buying 4,000 acre-feet of water. The farmers would like to have that water, too, and it just is not out there. So what we're suggesting is this would be a long haul. Your talking points were perfect. Get a group together that's collaborative, can negotiate deals, you know, coming to the table saying, this is the most important reservoir in the state, it's the moneymaker. Somebody give us our rec pool is not going to get a rec pool. You know, if you could get some folks that can sit down and learn how the water works, where the water is, identify sources of water, be patient as it's available, maybe some good water years, be able to strike and acquire that water from Samonchama contractors. If you can convince the state engineer to keep their credit water in Elephant Butte, sure, it can be stored there. Just a little technicality, what that water is, is it can be relinquished to Texas. That's their only other option with that water, is to let Texas use it in exchange for being able to store water in upstream reservoirs during the years where it's below 4,000 acre, 400,000, and they can't store. So that's the chip there is. New Mexico has that. They can give it to Texas in exchange for future storage, when storage wouldn't be required. Or they can keep it in Elephant Butte, and people can recreate on it. A little word of caution there is the evap. It's always evaporating at about maybe 4,000 to 6,000 acre-feet. So if you're not replenishing it, those pools will disappear over time. So we're thinking, you know, our suggestion is get some good negotiators in place, potentially get some legislation. The other thing that happened to that 70s pool of water is, once Elephant Butte was in the 80s and came up and spilled, that water spilled first, so it was gone. That's another place that legislation could help, is to tell us, maybe that water's the last to spill and not the first to spill, because... last to spill and not the first to spill, because why would you acquire all this water only knowing it could be gone one day? So that's something that could be. And I can't lobby Congress, I'm just suggesting some ideas here for folks to deal with the spill issue, come up with a funding source to buy this water over time so that you can strike when water is available. Agreements with farmers or the city of El Paso is also possible. They can keep their water in the reservoir. Our operational guidelines allow for that, but they need to be incentivized to do it. Otherwise, you know, why would they do it out of the kindness of their heart? Probably not so much. But if there was incentives there, they may be willing to leave water in the reservoir. So that's just kind of our ideas to share, to help be solutions-oriented, which Bureau Reclamation certainly is solutions-oriented. What did I aim? These charts are now available online. You have a link to them in your fact sheet. It's the very first link. They'll be updated monthly, so you can see, you know, if we're getting some good monsoon, this gets updated, you'll see how that's going to affect the reservoir level. Anything else?
Ms. Fader, we complained two years ago about the dearth of information and the inability to get into websites and see things. So Ms. McKenna has been sending these charts to us.
Oh, great, good.
And that's appreciated. VOR is very difficult to contact.
Our websites.
And to get information from. Y'all need to work on that.
Online, you mean?
Yes. It's extremely difficult. You have to be a Paul Tooley wizard to deal with internet technology and capabilities, and that's a really shortcoming of the agency.
Could not agree with you more. Yvette McKenna's phone number, I believe, will work. She will get you the information. It's up in Salt Lake, we have no control over it. I've expressed my extreme dissatisfaction in the past, and nothing has changed.
It's almost, and I'm not picking on you.
That's fine.
But it's almost like if you can't find it, it's not a problem. And that's an issue.
Yeah, no, we don't want to send that message at all.
We definitely don't. I'm Mary Carlson, I'm the Public Affairs Specialist, and I will just say this, people find me. I don't know how, but I get about 20 to 30 calls a week about Elephant Butte. I filled calls from yesterday. It was an elderly fisherman who's been, he moved here 20 years ago. I don't know if they're getting me through the website or where they're getting my information, but I do filled a lot of these calls, and you all now have my business card, and I've been there 15 years, I don't plan on going anywhere. Please give me a call. You know, I coordinate our congressional briefings, I coordinate our media, I spend hours on the phone with individual citizens every day explaining to them the ins and outs of Elephant Butte and Caballo and how they actually operate, the legislation behind them, all of that information. I'm an open book, so please, I will hand out my card to anybody here who needs to call me, and I'd be glad to talk to anybody at any time. And we are working on our website. I've tried to make some improvements to that recently as well. And the goal was, Yvette wasn't reaching everybody with that email, so we're posting it on that website, and it'll be at the same link every time. You can just pull the link from the back of that fact sheet, and that will be updated mid-month every month, so everybody knows exactly what we're projecting to happen with the reservoirs in the next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvette. Well, we recognize that it's a complicated issue. We're depending on Ms. Harrell and hopefully our two senators to recognize the crisis on local economies and the ability for folks to utilize this reservoir that goes back to their granddad taking them fishing here. And many of them are granddads now. So we desperately need some recognition of the significance of this little reservoir. And I know that you deal with reclamation issues and flows that are interstate and those sorts of things, but, boy, we just, Neil expressed it really well. We have not been able to get any traction in getting things going here, and we need some help. It's amazing, I worked with Tom Sweattnam and Chris Basin quite a lot a few years ago. And when the Colorado River Compact was signed in '22, it was in a drought, and they over-allocated the waters then. And so those kinds of things, I don't put much faith in climate change. These are, they happen with cycles. The cycles are irregular. But this is not an extreme drought. If you look over the past 1,000 years, it's pretty cyclical and as severe in those past cycles as it is now. So we need to do a better job of planning and being able to keep some water in the lake. So, Commissioner?
Go ahead. Well, thank you, first off, for the presentation. Does the Bureau of Reclamation do any, or have they done any drought contingency plans as far as water management in the Rio Grande?
Yes. Well, we don't do those things. We like the states and local communities to drive water in their communities, but we do have a program, we have several programs, but the drought relief program under Water Smart, first thing that we can help fund is for towns, communities, the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District just did one, they prepared a drought contingency plan. Now the projects that are in there are eligible for reclamation-funded programs. So Congress has been amazing to the Bureau of Reclamation. They give us more money than we ask for every year, and they'll put it in places that are driven by stakeholders. So in any given year, there could be, there's money available, there could be lots of money available in a program like this. I have engaged discussions with the state, because there's only so much in irrigation district to do. I'm encouraging the state of New Mexico to take advantage. I've figured out the states are eligible to apply. I don't think a state has ever done that, and so I'm trying to convince them to prepare a state-level drought contingency plan with some solutions in there that will then be eligible for good chunks of funding. So we don't do them ourselves, but we encourage our water users to do them, and we fund those.
So if I may continue, Mr. -- so why doesn't Bureau look at doing a, I mean, I understand you encourage locals to do it, but I find it odd that you encourage people to do it, but you guys don't. And I mean that with all due respect.
No, I'm glad you asked that, because I was going to offer it, and I decided not to. The cycles that we were just talking about, it was Bureau Reclamation's bad luck to come into existence on the heels of really good hydrology. So when we, we were just this little tiny speck of time that we came into existence, we looked at the Colorado, we looked at all these rivers, and we doled out the water from what the hydrology told us. That was one of the best water periods ever. So we planned our projects for more water than was ever going to exist. Follow the Klamath Basin right now. It's been ugly for 20 years, brutally ugly. We've been there. Every single senior leader in reclamation spends a ton of time in Klamath trying to resolve the problems. I ask myself, when are we going to deal with the real problem? The fact, instead of coming up with $13 million drought programs to help farmers every year, we need to go there and tell everybody there's not enough water to go around, and somebody's going to have to figure out how to deal with that, because we haven't. We've just been there with Band-Aids. But it's happening in the Colorado right now, it's happening in the Rio Grande. When are we going to admit? And we don't, New Mexico's very different. We don't have project water throughout the whole state. The state of New Mexico controls the water north of here. It looks like a reclamation project, but it's not. It was actually built by the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, and they went bankrupt after the Depression in times, and we came in and rebuilt the project, got them out of debt, and we're giving it back to them. So that's very unique that we don't own the project waters in northern New Mexico. We do control project water, Elephant Butte down. So that's an unusual thing for reclamation, so I'm not sure. What I'm talking about, the bigger picture, Colorado River, Klamath, when are we going to deal with the fact that there's not enough water to go around and stop putting Band-Aids on things? I don't know. I will be an advocate for that. I'm a very lowly area manager, but you're right, there's not enough water to go around, and somebody needs to start making hard decisions on where it's going to go.
The basin study.
We are, thank you, doing a basin study. Unfortunately, it was clipped. We do, basin study's another program where we will look out, that's why I know about those tree rings, because we've done basin study south of here. We did one for Santa Fe City, and we're doing on the Pecos that we're just wrapping up. We're just kicking off a basin study for the Rio Grande. It's going to start. We tried to extend it up into the headwaters in Colorado. They told us they don't want us up there. They've got all their models, go away, thank you very much. We wanted to do all the way through our El Paso district. Texas had legislation, someone in Texas had legislation passed making a stop at Elephant Butte. So that's the downside of it, because we like to look at the whole thing so we can deal with all the issues. But we are looking for the state line in New Mexico down here to Elephant Butte. We'll project the hydrology. USGS does projections for us, so they'll go back as far as they can with tree roots, look at those cycles you're talking about, there were worse droughts in there. Factor all that in to projections, along with bringing all the right people in the room to project the water uses out, whatever defined period of time we decide, I'm sure we'll go out 100, 150 feet a year, and look at the reality of the hydrology, and then the program is designed to start developing adaptations to that. So it is getting at what we're talking about, really dealing with the hard truth of how much water's actually available, and these are all the uses and all the tribal water in New Mexico. I mean, they're going to have a number in this basin study. And so we do, our basin study program, I think, is probably what you're getting at. It'll look out 100 years, and it's not going to be pretty, we know. And we hope that will be the basis of a state's 50-year water plan that's been talked about. We hope our information will feed into a state water plan.
Thank you. And just a couple more. So I want to hit on something you said earlier in your presentation, that there's water being contracted, and that's why you're not able to move it down. And I was actually going to ask you, in Section 7 of the Rio Grande Compact, which in there, you can't hold additional water up north, but it's below 400,000, and I'm assuming that's why you're not able to do it, because it's contracted water. Who's it contracted by?
So all the water users are between Heron, basically Santa Fe, just north. The lowest San Juan Chama contractor, I think, is Belen City. So there's no reason for any of those contractors to keep their water in Elephant Butte. This is some water that Neil and folks are going after because the state, what, those folks don't use that water necessarily directly, they don't divert it to themselves. The MRGCD does, and the Water Authority does. But all the other, Tana Taos, Taoski Valley, Three Pueblos get that water, Los Lunas, Belen, these are all the, so our San Juan Chama project, the state allocated that water themselves. And we have a contract with all those contractors. They're paying us back for the project in proportion to how much water they get, and then they tell us how they want to use it. But because they don't divert it, what they do is they use it to offset their groundwater pumping. So Los Lunas supplies their citizens by pumping groundwater. The groundwater impacts the flows in the Rio Grande. They use their San Juan Chama water to, we release it to offset their groundwater pumping, so it doesn't make it to Elephant Butte reservoir because it's offsetting their pumping. Theoretically, it doesn't make it. We believe some of it does. So that's how they use that water. The Water Authority, because they're such a big pumper and such a big water user, they will actually stage some of it occasionally in Elephant Butte in proactively paying. So if the state says you owe us 1,500 acre feet this year, and they have 5,000 sitting in Elephant Butte, they'll subtract that 1,500 from the 5,000, and now all of a sudden they only have 3,500 sitting in Elephant Butte. So they will move water down on occasion because they know they're going to owe it to the state for the depletions. To ask them to move 30,000 down, there's really no reason for them to take it from a reservoir that doesn't evaporate as much and put it down in an area that does evaporate more. We've asked them, they said no. They could be part of a long-term solution. Big problems like this, the more people you bring to solve it, you share the pain, the less pain there is for each person. So maybe they would agree to always store 5,000 down here. I don't know, but maybe. You add that to our minimum pool, now you've got 15 towards your 400,000. So those are the contractors.
I just want to clarify, because you asked about the 400,000 and the storage restrictions. So you're talking about San Juan Chama water. That's a trans-basin project that's giving New Mexico its share of Colorado River water. That does not count in the Rio Grande Compact, you know, calculations for storage. So when Neil says we're keeping this water at Heron and, you know, things like that, well, this is a whole different system that's bringing water from the San Juan River to New Mexico through a trans-basin system. This is our Colorado River water, not Rio groundwater. You're talking two different systems. So I know it's getting way, way, way in the weeds, but if you ever want to talk about the technical details, you know, we can do full briefings on that just to help, because water in New Mexico is so complicated. But it's important to note that that San Juan Chama water we're talking about contracting is totally a separate water system. It just would be possibly available to lease if the contractors are willing to do so.
Thank you for that clarification.
And if I could provide one more clarification, because I knew there was one thing nagging me, it was why does the EVAP get charged to, we call it Compact Texas? Once we release it from Elephant Butte, that water enters Compact Texas. That's Caballo, EBID is in Compact Texas. We just call it that for simplicity. It's the Compact that dictates who pays for which EVAP. When the water's sitting up in Elephant Butte reservoir, it's being counted against New Mexico because they haven't released it yet. So they haven't gotten credit to delivering it to Texas until they release it from Elephant Butte reservoir. Once they release it, it goes by the gauge, boom, they got credit for deliveries to Texas. So when it's sitting in Elephant Butte evaporating, that's water that they can't deliver to Texas. Once it's moved down to Caballo, New Mexico got credit for delivering it, and if it's evaporating in Caballo, it's EBID and the El Paso districts are losing that water now. So somebody's losing the EVAP water, depending on which reservoir it is. So I just challenge folks, because we're getting really hammered for storing water in Caballo, and I just, it was with Representative Dow, I said, whoever's talking, it's probably their EVAP. If they're speaking against Caballo, it's probably because they're getting charged the EVAP, because it's pretty predictable, who likes it where, based on that.
Thank you. Mr. I do have some more questions, but for sake of time, I mean, I can have a private conversation.
Absolutely. In fact, I should have brought business cards.
You're very polite. One point of clarification is when the Colorado Compact was signed in '22, they estimated it was 120% of normal flow over the time that they've had it since.
120?
It was not in a drought at that time. So they over-allocated the water in the Compact to start with. I don't know if that happened with the Rio Grande Compact, but if it did, then we need to take a look at that legislatively so that we bring that back to what over-real-time flows are over decades. So, Commissioner Hopkins?
No, Commissioner Day kind of asked my question about the contract water. I think I might understand it, but I probably don't, but I'll talk to you later about it.
Absolutely.
It's complicated.
Yeah, just probably sharing, we could share with you each entity and how much of the water, if a full season is 96,000 acre feet. So if we get good snowpack, it makes it down into Heron, we dole out that 96,000 acre feet to each contractor.
Thank you for your presentation.
Mr. Chair, wanted to be noted, I think it'd be easier for us to discuss rocket science versus water law.
Yeah. Well, again, we want to extend our appreciation to you for coming down today. We don't have your contact information. We appreciate having Mary's, but if you could provide.
We will get it to you, yes.
Serena with the contact information. We'll make sure we get that in our phones, and you'll probably hear from us. Thank you for coming today, and Neil, thank you for giving us a perspective on the user side and the needs for the communities.
I need one comment.
Yes, step to the podium if you would.
Both Jennifer and Mary have been very forthcoming. Most of the information I've gotten, I've gotten from them. They have been very easy to communicate with, and I really appreciate them. I wholeheartedly disagree with them. But I do, I do really appreciate them and their willingness to communicate with us, and they have been very helpful for us, so I want to make that clear. I'm not mad at them, I just disagree with them.
I think that's appropriate for discussion, Neil. So thank you for bringing that point forward. Yep. Okay, we will move on to sacred wind broadband, John Bedal and crew.
Good morning, Chairman Paxton and Commissioners. Good morning, Chairman Paxton, and Commissioners Day and Hopkins. My name is John Bedell, I'm the CEO and founder of Secret Wind Communications. Our headquarters is in Yate, New Mexico, and we have offices in three other cities here in New Mexico, and soon to have one fifth. With me today, I'd like to introduce Neil Nigalau, who's our General Manager, located in our Albuquerque office, and Misty Willett, who is our Sales and Business Development Manager, who's located right here. And also, our newest employee, Paul Tully, who will be the Director of our office here in Sierra County. Let's see, move along with this, see if this works, very good. I'm here to describe the project that we're undertaking right now in Sierra County, how it came to be, who we are, and talk to you a bit about fiber optics, since the core of our business plan here in providing broadband in this area is gonna be by way of fiber, fiber to the home, but we do other things too, you know, we deliver broadband by other ways. This is the very first partnership between a rural broadband company and an electric co-op in the state of New Mexico, and one of the few that has ever occurred in the country. And I applaud Denise here, who actually made out a call to anybody who was willing to work with her on this project, and, you know, we gladly stood up, and I really appreciate all of her support in all of this. Also, we want to recognize, in terms of, and I'll start with this message and end with this message, that when it comes to delivering broadband, this is the highest-speed broadband for rural areas, comparable to the broadband services provided in the most urban of areas, it really takes a village. A single company cannot do this alone. The population densities, the cost of service, and other challenges, including right-of-way, which we'll talk about in a minute or two, are enough to cause any, or the bulk of the broadband providers in this country to stop, take a breath, and turn around and go home. But, you know, it has taken a village here for us to get started, and we've formed a collaboration, I think a very close-working collaboration with the Sierra Electric, with the County Commission, and your support of our application for a grant from the USDA. We received that grant, it was an $8.2 million grant, and required a $2 million match, which we didn't have. The State Department, the state of New Mexico stood up with the Department of Information Technology Grant to, to help us get a leg up and provide a piece of this network in a core area that I'll show you here in the valley. We also, and I wanna mention the USDA, the United States Department of Agriculture is the foremost grantor of broadband grants and loans to rural telcos and rural broadband providers. And this is one of their largest grants, too, and it took a stretch for them to, I think, consider a project of this sort, where we were putting in about 260 miles of fiber in an area with just about 1,500 to 1,800 homes. We started in 2006 with a different type of business plan and a different type of focus altogether. We acquired 3,200 square miles of operating territory from what was then Quest territory, mostly on Navajo lands in northwest New Mexico, even though it included some non-tribal lands as well. When we started in 2006, there were only 26% of the homes in our territory in Navajo land that had access to telephone service, 911. There was no broadband. So we were the very first company in the state of New Mexico to provide telephone service to the majority, and now it's nearly 90% of all the people in our service territory. We were the first company in the state of New Mexico to provide, first company on anywhere serving the Navajo lands in the three-state area, to provide broadband. We were the first company to provide fiber to the home, and we are still the only company to provide fiber to the home to the housing developments in our territory on Navajo. And this is an example of a ribbon-cutting ceremony, the first fiber-to-the-home project in an NHA, Navajo Housing Authority, development up in the Four Corners area. To the right, we connected fiber to, this is the Village of Milan, picture to the right, we connected fiber to the Village of Milan, the very first village in New Mexico to be completely wired. Their government buildings, their first responder building, their court, their court building had fiber connectivity, and we ran fiber to Industrial Park. Industrial Park still doesn't have a tenant, but they have broadband there, waiting for them when they can attract a tenant to that area. We were the first company also in, the first broadband company or telco, to provide broadband by soar to the many houses on Navajo that don't have electricity, that are off the power grid. The commitment we have made is that we are, whether using it, well, we right now use the greatest mix of technologies, landline and various types of microwave technology to provide service to our areas. It takes a village, but it also takes a different type of vision to serve challenging, geographically challenging rural areas. So you can see an individual who's attaching a microwave unit on a house, we can get 100 megabit to the house by microwave. We were the first on the Navav Nation to provide 10 megabit. We were the first by microwave, we were the first to provide 25 megabit, as we scaled up, and we were the first, one of the first in the country to achieve 100 megabit, and first in the state to achieve 100 megabit by microwave to the home. And, you know, we're, the guy's installing fiber line, and then you see one of our microwave towers. We have a little gift for the Commissioners here, and there's a little story that goes behind this. Back in 2009, when we started rolling out broadband after building up our core infrastructure, one of our technicians was out in the field, and a woman, a household owner out there, asked that person how she can get telephone service. And she was way off the copper grid that we acquired from Quest, she was too far out to get fiber, and so one of our texts is, "Lady, we'll get service to you in a five-gallon bucket, if that's what it takes." And that's been our attitude all along. And so, and it struck a chord with me, I mean, what he said struck a chord with me. And to generate service, because dealing with folks who have never had telephone service in their life, who live 150 miles away from the nearest town and the nearest Walmart, the idea of subscribing to service was something uncommon to them. In order to subscribe to service, you wait, you know, two weeks from now, my brother-in-law's gonna drive me to Gallup, and I'll go to Walmart and buy a phone, and then, you know, you come back and install this stuff. We started delivering people buckets. We dropped them at the door, and we would, when we knew that we would be able to provide them service, we dropped, we had a bag of potatoes, a pair of work gloves, and a $9.95 Walmart phone in those buckets. And we had people calling us on their cellphones to get service like this.
That's amazing.
Yeah. All right. Let's talk about what we're doing here in Sierra County. As I mentioned, we, this is an $8.2 million project, or what we're calling our Phase 1, is an $8.2 million fiber project that represents $6 million from the USDA and $2 million from the state of New Mexico. And it's to reach approximately 1,500 homes. But we also have identified about an additional 300 homes that are outside the project area that we intend to pick up as well. We are gonna be building an operations center here, we're buying a building in Elephant Butte, and we're gonna be investing about $350,000 in a network operations center here. There'll be our data center, it'll be the point, the main point of entry for our fiber, our fiber cable that'll be connected to the outside world. And it will put this area really on the telecommunications map, because it'll be the only one of its kind, in the way of an operations center here in southern New Mexico. And we do it as we have all along, as we started up in northwest New Mexico. We'll get a grant to get us situated somewhere, and then we'll just organically build from there. We had a meeting in Doñana County just yesterday, talking about, oh, and I should say, this project started with a federal government E-Rate grant to connect fiber to the schools in TRC and the schools in Hatch, New Mexico. So we have now a fiber backbone built there. Now, the question is, what do we do with this backbone? What can we, what can we do to capitalize on the capacity from this backbone? Let's find out where else we can deliver service in Sierra County. Now we're looking at Doñana County. Once we have this network established in Sierra County, what are we gonna do to grow outward? And we're looking at, right now, serving all the way down to Sunland Park. And that's, excuse me?
After Sierra.
Did I say that? After Sierra.
Just one of them.
Let's put the curve for Denise.
Yeah. All right. So, what you will, what we are installing here is the highest-capacity fiber system anywhere in the state of New Mexico. If you could see, if you could reach in and you'll see the fiber wand there, these are segments of, this is a fiber cable, this is the type of cable that goes directly to school. It has 12 strands. And we have committed to give, provide each of the schools with a gigabit, with easily scalable 10 gigabit download speeds to each school. This fiber, though, has hundreds of times higher capability of providing the capacity to the schools. The fiber that we're putting in here in Sierra County is 288 strands. And to put that in context, the highest-capacity fiber that's running down the Rio Grande Corridor, down I-25, is 96 strands. And so we're building for the future here. When the folks from El Paso all the way up to Albuquerque or Denver get the message that as demand grows, they're gonna have to put in more and more fiber, as spaceport develops, they're gonna be putting more and more fiber, Sierra County is gonna be already there. So we will have, you know, more capacity than, you know, in this area than any other in the surrounding area. And what will this do for the county? This could be, come a part of a Rio Grande or southern New Mexico information hub, where, you know, there is a flow of data from schools to universities, hospitals to hospitals, you know, from Sierra County down to El Paso, or Cruzes or El Paso. This will promote work from home. The leadership in the business and political leadership in this area can advertise the availability for people to move here and work from the home, whether it's a weekend home or a home for permanent living. This will enable the local medical facilities to develop even medical services to the home, telemedicine services that, where you can do, run diagnostics and other testing and whatnot, you know, directly from computer to computer to people's homes. Again, we'll have capacity enough to meet any of the needs at the spaceport if required, and it opens up, once this area gets enough broadband, enough broadband capacity, it could start looking at other opportunities for grants, whether it's economic development-focused grants, healthcare-focused grants, educational grants, or what. You'll have the foundation here for that. And the, just to give you an idea of what is being deployed, of the 260-some miles of fiber that we're gonna be putting in in just this first round of investment, about 200 of those miles are what we call middle mile, or backbone. And you can see here, a fiber backbone map of the United States, all right? Most of that fiber is transport. It carries the capacity of telecommunications signals, of traffic, from one city to another city. And unfortunately for this area, one of these lines happens to come down I-25, one of the middle mile, but there is little consideration to dropping off the capacity of that network to the communities along the route. And that is what has harmed rural America greatly since, in the last 30 years, since these fiber transport lines began to be deployed, that they were to connect, they were to take the telecommunications traffic from a Chicago to a New York, or from a Salt Lake City to a Denver. And there was little consideration for dropping off these handles, or the meat points, to serve communications towers, to bring more capacity, mobile capacity to the area, to serve the communities themselves. And this is what we're doing. And we've done this up in northwest New Mexico, and this is how we've expanded easily into grants in Milan and Blue Water Village, and San Rafael and the like. Because every community we pass, we have adequate drop-off points to serve those communities. And this is how, what we call our organic growth. This is how we grow organically. And then of the 260-some miles of fiber, where about 60 miles actually drops fiber, last mile drops to people's homes, and I'll touch on that in another minute. This is a map of the facilities that we put, will be installed in the, in this area with the DO-IT grant. And here is the, a map of the expansion of the fiber to the home now, with the USDA grant, and this is then the two combined. Our, what are the organic growth, and so we'll call this Phase 2, Phase 3, we'll have so many, you know, as many phases as needed as we expand further. As we're building out our facilities, we're gonna be looking around in the neighborhood, either through a truck windshield, or over Google Earth, to see what other communities are out there, and how we're going to build, whether it's fiber to the home, or it's fiber to a microwave tower, and provide service by microwave to these people's homes. But here's an example of, and with a diagram to the right of how this works, where we give fiber to the tower, from a tower we can shoot directly to people's homes, or from a tower to relay points. We could even, as we have done in one Native American community that already had electric service but no phone service, we went from fiber to microwave, microwave to the poles, and then strung, went from microwave back to fiber, and strung fiber to all the homes in that one community. All right. Well, the biggest challenges that any of us in the telecom and the electric world face, I think, is not the investment, it's not the getting enough subscribers, it's not maintaining the network, it's dealing with the rights-of-way. The rights-of-way have been the bane of our existence since the day we started. We are dealing with several tribes, and the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Bureau of Land Management, US Forest Service, even the Bureau of Reclamation, if you hear it, they've been good to work But the, and one of the problems we've run with, we've run into with right-of-way is that when we apply for a grant to the federal government or the state, they do not include the money that we incur for the right-of-way. And sometimes, the right-of-way costs are 10%, or higher, of the entire cost of the project. But, rights-of-way costs, paying for easements, paying for rights-of-way, are not part of a grant, and I think it's for obvious reasons, they don't want games to be played where I'm having side negotiations with the tribe, and the tribe says, "I'll charge you $100,000", and I say, "No, charge a million, you know, we'll be friends, charge you a million". we just pass it on the government. That doesn't happen here. And often the rights of way, and this is something that you, you know, you really need to know here, and something that we need to work with Representative Harrell about, is that often the rights of way policies in the United States are completely out of sync with the, with another imperative. We are right now living under a broadband imperative. The White House, our government, our own governor, the FCC, the USDA have all mandated that, that the telecom universe out there get broadband as soon as possible to all rural homes in New Mexico. There is not a thing that has changed in the last 18 months at the, at the bureaucracy level, whether it's any of those other federal agencies or even state agencies that I've mentioned, that have made accommodations to accelerate or expedite a right of way process. What we have to do right here in this area, and this was a complete surprise to us, before we could do any work here, we had to get the signatures from 1,400 homeland owners notarized. So with a notary, you require a witness. So we have to send out two people to every one of 1,400 homes. All right. And it would, it came as a surprise to Sierra Electric as well as to us. We have an easement there. We have the pole line. They want us to do a centerline, you know, survey. So what's centerline survey? Stand behind this pole, look down that way at those other poles, there's your centerline survey. And we have to do a survey, we have to establish a telecom easement on top of the electric easement, which is the same easement. All right. And in order to get those last mile drops to people's homes, we have to get their permission, each household's permission notarized, all right, allowing their easement, electric easement to be converted to a telecom easement. And we, I'm in communication with US Senator Lujan's office, and I'm asking the contacts we have there, why can't the federal government establish an opt-out policy? Okay? Because of the 1,400 homes that we're going, that we're knocking, on whose doors we're knocking, I'll bet you there aren't 10 who don't want ultimately a fiber to the home, especially if it's a free installation.
Yeah.
And it would be a lot easier for us, and certainly a lot more affordable for us, to have 10 people opt out than have to get signatures from 1,400 people. And that's what we were contending with too. And, you know, we're, we're coming somewhat hand in hand here to the county, asking for your support on this. We also, I mean, we, on the second, in the second column here, we have, there's a make-ready cost that we didn't anticipate. And this is, make-ready is what has to be done to Sierra Electric's pole lines to accommodate new fiber. And we found out that, or Denise found out, that a number of her poles are too short to meet the expectations of the, the industry's expectations and government's expectations of an adequate clearance between ground and the, and the first cable. So that we've identified over 550 poles that have to be replaced. And that's not in Denise's budget, it's not in our budget for this. So we're asking again for the county's help in helping us to, as, as part of the village that it takes to, to build the system, to help us incur and defray some of the costs that we're experiencing in the easement issue and in the, and to procure this make-ready issue. So we're estimating around $850,000 is costing us to get, to hire people and to go through the processes and the surveys and to get all of our signatures and get the easements officially declared and satisfying the Bureau of Land Management and reestablish these easements as telecom easements. And we're estimating about $1.6 million to tear out, replace the old poles, put in new poles. And this is something that should be considered a long-term investment. I mean, not just the fiber system that we're installing here in, in the area, but just in terms of the, the electric infrastructure. The make-ready work is going to reinforce the, the infrastructure needed for both electric service and for broadband service for the next 20, 40 years or whatever, however long those, those poles exist. So again, thank you very much for your time. Takes a village and it takes also a vision to get where we need to go here in Sierra County. And I'm thrilled to be a part of, of growth here in the county and I appreciate all the encouragement and the very strong welcome that we've received since we've stepped foot in your soil. Thank you. Any questions, please?
Thank you, John. Yeah, we got broadband to array is a huge step for those kids in that school down there. Commissioner Hopkins had several decades in education, was a principal here for 17 years. And you may want to speak to what that does.
No, I think everyone down south is real excited about it. I mean, it's too bad it wasn't in place when COVID hit because it sure helped out a lot of families down there.
Yep. Thank you.
No, if I may just make a couple of comments. First off, thank you for your presentation. And I want to give a big shout out to Sierra Electric Co-op for starting this initiative. I, I don't think a lot of community, community members realize how big this is for Sierra County, and that was started by Sierra Electric Co-op. So Denise, thank you, thank your board for bringing this. As we briefly discussed in Serena's report, the county did get some money from the American Rescue Plan, and a part of that can be used for broadband. And for our county, I think it's really restricted that that's what we could use it for.
That's right.
And so we'll definitely be in conversations with the Co-op, with Sacred Wind on how we can put that money to use and help get this off and running. So thank you for everything you guys done.
Thank you, sir.
And we think you're a godsend, John, you and your crew. We, we see us being able to, to be a mini hub and we're especially anticipatory of being able to promote your services to a public that wants to move here. One of our primary directions is to bring families with youngsters in here. And if we can do that and support them with, with real up-to-date broadband access to the internet and the world, that's going to help us.
Thank you, sir.
We really appreciate Sacred Wind and Ethos and Sierra Electric and New Mexico, the economic development folks for working with us on this. We're part of the village, so we look forward to see what comes next. And Vice Chair Day is, is right on. We've got a chunk of money there that we want to dedicate to, to broadband expansion and in kind or whatever it works. We need to work on that.
Excellent. Thank you. And we, we intend to be a very strong part of this community too, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Arrow Environment here? I don't think they made it this morning.
I think Max is going to be.
Max, you going to do a presentation?
Arrow Environment is not here, but New Mexico EDD is here on behalf of the deal that was made.
Okay. Great. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
And Max, I'm terrible at names. Tell me your last name.
It's Max Gruner.
Gruner, okay.
And I'm with the New Mexico Economic Development Department. John, it's good to see you. And I'm standing in for Luis Marquez, who wasn't able to be here today. And before I begin, I want to give a huge shout out to you. Thank you for all the work you've done on this. I mean, you're just a jewel and you all are so lucky to have her in this role. So I'm coming to this a little bit in a vacuum, so ask me questions and if I say something that doesn't make intuitive sense to you, please call me out on it. In August of 2020, the county entered into a PPA, a project participation agreement with the company, Arrow Environment, for a, to serve as fiscal agent for a half million dollar leader grant. That document was executed shortly thereafter. The, the company and the partners then put their heads together and they realized for just a little bit more money, we could really maximize and optimize the infrastructure improvement. And namely, what it came down to is if we can only increase the diameter of the water line, right, like as, as John was saying, really building for the future, that that would be a good thing. So we went back to our piggy bank and, and counted our pennies to figure out whether we would be able to accommodate the additional $24,000 and some $24,201. And yes, indeed, we are able, the New Mexico Economic Development Department is able to come to the table and to increase the grant amount by that, the $500,000 grant amount by that amount. And so in front of you, I believe, or somewhere in your documents, you have an amendment to the PPA. The only change is that rather than it being half a million dollars, it's now half a million dollars plus $24,201. And so I'm here on behalf of the company and the New Mexico Economic Development Department to urge you to approve the amendment to the original PPA that was executed in August of last year. I'll stand for any questions.
Max, we do have an action to consider for commission approval and we will be to that shortly, but we really appreciate everything that's happened in this spaceport. That's carried us through some tough times with GRTs and construction and bringing folks in, and it's a stellar project. We're glad that, that your department is a partner in that and thank you for being here today. Questions?
Thank you, Max.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Boy, that's the longest reports we've had in my history. Two and a half years, close to three. Is there a motion on the Board of Finance, April reconciliation?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April reconciliation.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Amy, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Motion passes. We have no old business, Ms. Bartu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, no, no old business.
Okay, we'll go to new home, new business, take-home vehicle request for our new EMA, Ryan Williams. This is a formality so that he can use his vehicle and get away without having to come pick up a vehicle and go to an emergency. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to make a motion for Ryan to be able to take on the vehicle.
Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes. The motion passes. We're to contracts, agreements and procurement, Manager Bartu and Ms. O'Gee.
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello, Jocelyn.
Um, this agreement was brought to me by Shelley Truheal, our clerk. And it's just a filing system for their documents, just to kind of modernize it. We had it reviewed by Mr. Pedo and he didn't have any issues with it as well. So it's just like another formality to approve it, to move forward with it.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, real quickly.
Go ahead.
So there is no cost to the county by part of this, but it is making a service available to the public. And number two, I've checked with other county clerks who have utilized the service and have been very pleased with the recording they performed. So I have no further comments.
Okay.
I thought it was pretty easy to, straightforward, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the MOU between Sierra County Clerk and CSC E Recorder Solutions?
Move to approve the MOU.
Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
You'll execute the MOU. And then the second is amendments to the PPA between Sierra County and Arrow Environment to include the 24,000 and some total.
I did not have that one, so I'm going to give it to Serena.
We've got it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
So as you heard from Max, this is just the amendment to increase the amount by the $24,201. Staff recommendation to pass.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes. Motion passes. Cooperative agreement between Sierra County and EMA CV, CVFD and Ellen Curtis for firefighting apparel.
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
This goes into the threshold that's over the 20,000. It's a cooperative agreement that the city of Roswell put out an official bid, but it's open to other governmental entities. So Cabayo's wanting to purchase over threshold dollar amount, so I put it on as, for your review and approval as well.
Boy, that bunker gear's gotten expensive, hasn't it?
Yes, it has. But Cabayo's also wild land, so they do a lot of other stuff that other fire departments don't do.
Is there a motion regarding the Co-op agreement between Sierra County and the vendor, EMA CVFD?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the cooperative agreement.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, a roll call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passes. We have a purchase agreement between Hinkle and Landers and the county of Sierra on audits. Jocelyn.
Um, so right now, the way the state does it, it's in a portal. So I'm asking for your approval on the cost of the spending and then I checked it yesterday and it's in review. So when it comes through as approved, I would like to call you and have you sign it and then we'll send it to Hinkle. It went up a little bit because we're expecting another federal audit, so they're just, they included it in the cost.
Okay. Is there a motion on the purchase agreement?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the purchase agreement between Hinkle, Landers and the county of Sierra.
Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Motion passes. We have a intercept agreement. Manager Bartu.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the intercept agreement actually goes hand in hand with Resolution 109079, the authorization of the intercept agreement between the spaceport. So I'll just, my recommendation is you'll, we'll discuss the resolution for your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I'm running the MOU between City of Tercy and Sierra County for the PPP storage, PPE.
Is that after the intercept agreement?
Yes, sir.
It's after the.
Okay, I guess I'm, go ahead, continue.
Okay.
Once the resolution is passed, I think this was just kind of a mis-sight and the intercept agreement was just kind of backup documentation for that resolution. So I don't think there's any motion needed.
Not for the MOU?
We're on the intercept agreement at this time, which was the documentation following the Resolution 109079.
So we don't need any action to?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have that on my agenda. So I think we need to probably get, get straight what we had on the published agenda. So let me look online real fast or go to the front door.
And this, and she might have updated the agenda and maybe I just don't.
I think that's probably what happened. Because I was like, I thought they were on the MOU, City of Tercy.
Because here.
It's there. Oh. The intercept agreement is not on that.
On the final.
On the final.
Yep. Yep. Well, then that's, that's my mistake and it's already been done, so we don't, we don't need to address it.
But Mr. Chairman, if that's the spaceport intercept agreement, that does have to do with the 109-079 for the refunding.
Yep. But we're not addressing that today.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So we are to the MOU, City of Tercy and Sierra County, for PPE storage. Manager Bartu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you is the MOU between the County of Sierra and the City of Tercy. Our excess storage of PPE that we've gotten in the past has been stored at the fire department, the Tercy Fire Department. With transitions and change in staff, it's staff recommendation, just a formality to have a document, documentation in place to, so that it's clear where the PPE is and how we can use it and get to it and have access to it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the MOU between the City of Tercy and the Sierra County for the PPE storage.
Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're to resolutions, ordinances, and proclamations. Here we are on the intercept. So Resolution 109-078, Declaration of Emergency Drought Disaster. Manager Bartu.
Mr. Chairman, 109-078 is first, is what I'm showing?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, for the drought, yes, sir, sorry.
Yep.
So projections for our moisture levels are always low. This year, it's obvious that we've had some very serious discussions as to these levels being even lower than what we're used to. So staff, staff recommendation to pass this resolution, declaring disaster for emergency drought.
Attorney Peyto, does that give us any leverage on funds and grants that we can pursue?
Yes, sir. My understanding is that by, by issuing the declaration of the emergency, then we do have the opportunity to seek additional funding from state.
Or maybe through Farm Service Agency, there's also some additional funds that could be brought down federally.
Okay, good.
But just a quick point of clarification, we actually approved this, I believe, four months ago, so is there a need to approve?
Let me look at that.
Resolution again?
Mr. Chairman, if we can come back to it, I'll look at what the time, timeline was on, on our early resolution.
We'll go ahead and go with the intercept agreement, Resolution 109-079. Manager Bartu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is refunding revenue bonds for a spaceport. This is for the fourth of a percent tax collected, GRT tax collected. Seventy-five percent of this will be going to the New Mexico Finance Authority. Staff recommendation to pass.
Is there a motion to pass the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 109-079.
A second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes. Attorney Peyto?
Mr. Chairman, you got back to me too fast. I'm still trying to identify and locate the file. My, my, my thought, and I can't remember why we are, while we prepared the new resolution or the new declaration of emergency drought disaster, but I can't imagine we would have done so absent the expiration of the prior one. There is no harm in adopting it, doesn't, you know, it'll, it'll take effect and it'll take us forward, so, and it's based on the most recent drought indices, and that's what's indicated is, and included within the resolution. So it'd be my recommendation to approve, and I apologize for not having an answer as to whether or not this is covering a declaration we already have in effect.
And to give Mr. Chairman for clarification?
Yep, and if it augments it, then that's fine with me. Is there a motion to pass?
Some move.
Second.
So, motion to pass 109-078, Declaration of Emergency Drought Disaster. And second, a roll call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes, and maybe we can get some grants out of that, we'll pursue that. Manager Bartu. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into executive session pursuant to Section 10-15 E-TH to discuss matters in regards of pending and threatened litigation, personnel, and real estate reasons as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Amy.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
We are in executive session.
We'll come back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move to come out of executive session and certify that no action was taken and only matters listed on the agenda were discussed.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Row call, Amy?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
And we have business regarding Sierra County versus Smith Co.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would appreciate the board to entertain a motion to direct the chair and legal to proceed in the manner discussed in executive session and to deny the request for arbitration.
Is there a motion to such?
Mr. Chair, I move to direct the chair and legal to continue discussions with Smith Co. and to deny the arbitration request.
A second?
Moved and seconded. Row call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion passes. Regarding the county manager?
Mr. Chairman, I would request a motion to direct administration to negotiate the terms and conditions of an employment contract with the highest ranked applicant.
Is there a motion to such?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Row call, Amy?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion also passes. Is there any additional business before the board?
Mr. Chairman, there is, sir. I'd request that you remove B O C C versus Fish and Wildlife Service from executive session, add it as an action item after executive session.
Okay. Can we have a motion to remove the Board of County Commission versus Fish and Wildlife Service from executive and make it to the open session?
Mr. Chair, I move to move the Board of County Commissioners via Fish and Wildlife Service to open session, from executive session to open session.
A second?
Row call, Shelley? Moved and seconded.
Commissioner Paxton?
Shelley. See, Amy? I told you I knew it.
You made me forget what I was doing. Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion also passes. Any discussion on that, Attorney Pato?
Mr. Chairman, I'd request authorization to proceed in the manner discussed in executive session and to take such actions as necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Sierra County.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? A row call, Amy?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Any additional business? Ms. Bartu?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We are adjourned.